Please take attendance. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Thorstad.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Pro Tem Muller.
We have six present and one absent. Pro Tem Muller did let me know that he would be out of town this week, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to excuse Pro Tem Muller's absence. Vote by, yeah, roll call, please.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards. Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley. Mayor Coleman.
Yes, we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Adam, roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, we have six ayes and no nays. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody who is not currently on the agenda, if they would like to come forward, now is your time. I believe I have one name here. Chris, if you would like to come forward, this would be your time. Can you come forward and then you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Chris Carr. I represent Sweet Home Sanitation, address 1277 Arcadia Drive, Eugene, Oregon.
Nice, thank you.
We're here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. We appreciate the time tonight. We're here to talk about Sweet Home Sanitation, July 1st with the contract we have the city. July 1st, the rate adjustment will go into play. This year, we did have a CPI in the contract that came in at 8.15%, much larger than prior year of 4.94%. Going through as a business in the waste industry, we have a lot of costs that's gone up year over year. What I'm going to cover isn't excuses, it's just our costs have exceeded what CPI allows us to get from cities like yourself. And it's just to show you the dedication we have to servicing the city to keep, you know, trash recycling off the curbside. So cost of materials, we're up about 32 to 64%. Labor, up about 9%. Truck maintenance, 10.6. And then our container expenses, close to 7%. We did see a decrease in fuel from 22 to 23, even with that decrease in the P and L that we, that we report, you know, publicly. We're still seeing approximately about a 10% increase year over year. So I have with me tonight Josh Stanley, who is the site manager here locally. It is kind of the go-to for everything that the Sweet Home needs. Again, my name's Chris. I oversee Santa Pac in Eugene, Eco Sort, our recycling facility, and, and help Josh here in Sweet Home. So I just want to take a little time. Josh and I are both new. We both weren't with Sweet Home Sanitation this time last year. I believe Michael was here. Josh and I are working. We talked with the mayor, talked to city manager. To develop the relationship, we would be more than willing to come back and be on the agenda to go over kind of a year-over-year synopsis of customers and, you know, accounts, recycling tonnages, whatever questions or whatever you would like to see, we would be more willing to present that to you and kind of start to develop the relationship. But that's, that's all I have and proud to be a part of Sweet Home Sanitation and we do appreciate the business and the relationship that we've had in the past and we want to continue a good relationship going forward.
Thank you so much for coming and introducing yourself, Chris and Josh. Welcome to the community and thank you for the service you provide to our community and keeping it clean. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have any other visitors that would like to come forward? Need to name an address for the record, please.
Lisa Sheik, and my address is 42955 Green River Drive here in Sweet Home. We have, and my husband here, he owns Spalletto's, along with his mother. We have adjoining property. I'm trying to discern where the county property lies, but I do know that the property is owned by Saniam River Development Company. And as far as ODF is concerned, we have a field right in front of our house that is out of control. It, can you tell me, does anybody know if that's city or county property? Because I've heard full.
Does staff have any information regarding this?
There is quite a bit of land owned by Saniam River Development Company that is within city limits. Her address is just outside of city limits, but the majority of the undeveloped property to the south of your property is in city limits.
It's just like a little, like six, seven lots, just on the other side of a Green River Drive that is county property. So the map was correct. However, there, vegetation there is completely out of control. There's a lot of the brush, the yellow weed down there. And in 2020, there was a fire where a power line broke and it, it burned a lot of our property. And ODF said that if it got into that field, that part of the city of Lebanon would have been gone. It's down there by Riverside Church. And then there's the radiator shop. It's right there by the radiator shop. So they were highly concerned about that field not being taken care of. And it's a big fire hazard. Then we have the property down by the Trestle Tracks, which is 47th and Green River Drive. Where there's, there was just a fire there this weekend on Sunday. And there's transients down there. It's not monitored. And then last year, there was another fire and Kimmy Jewel called it in. So there was that. It's just overrun with transients down there and it's not really patrolled. So I don't know if you can address that with the police and then also address the fire hazard and danger.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Let's look into who owns the property and if it's private property, we, there might be some codes that could be enforced.
Okay, I did print off Title 10, but it's Saniam River Development Company and it's owned by Troy Cummins.
Okay.
And I've reached out to him personally, but he will not return my phone calls.
Okay. This is good to know. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Can we look into who owns the property and see if there's any codes that could be addressed there?
I, I know the owner and talked to him regularly, so I can bring it up with him. As far as codes go, we, obviously we have codes about burning, but those are intentionally set fires that we have codes against. When it comes to maintenance of property, we do have codes when it comes to tall grass and weeds. However, undeveloped property, you just have to, to maintain or cut down the weeds within, I believe it's 50 feet of, of developed property. And so with a property as large as this, it's, I think the whole thing is 305 acres. A lot of it is, is basically left natural. And, and so I'm not sure that it can be fully mowed entirely, but I know that Lisa stripped around developed areas. We can enforce that.
Okay. Thank you for looking into that. Appreciate it. Yes.
If I may add one more additional comment, as far as the concern regarding transients, I do want to say that Captain Cummings has actually been working on this today and has been working with the property owner on that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that report.
So I have a question. Is it possible that we could review that about undeveloped properties and grass near power lines, given what's happened in the last couple of years? Maybe it's something that we need to look at.
That's certainly something that if directed staff could research.
Okay.
And I have other fields, but I think it would be worth looking at right now.
Can I just add one more thing? As, as Director Larson said, this is something staff is absolutely happy to look at. We also are working with state on looking at potential fire hardening and, and other types of reviews and codes and ways that this can be modified. So if, if it would place the council, we'd like to continue that conversation with them and bring back a larger recommendation for all of that, if that would work.
That works. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I? Can we do it right away? Because we're in fire season.
We would like to do it soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to rearrange the agenda just slightly at the request of Counselor Sanchez. She would like to present her committee report and I think this is a good time for her to do so. Then we'll move on to old business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to work graveyard tonight, so I'm not quite sure when the meeting will be over and normally committee reports are at the end. But today I had an opportunity to meet with these ladies in the front row, part of our YAC Youth Advisory Committee. And I'm just really proud of them. I have not had a chance to get to know them until today and their concerns have been heard. And their advocacy will be realized and I hope that we can work with them moving forward. I'm just going to read some of the comments and concerns that they had. There's no education, they feel, within public school about how the local government works. There is a problem with lack of education with the process. They would like some of the teachers to invite the counselors to give presentations about how local government works. One of the major issues that they have is mental health and that is the stem of all of the problems they feel that is going on within the youth. So they wanted to have more action steps instead of just sitting around and talking about it. So we picked each other's brains and they came up with making a QR code, having an email, a phone number, setting up a website, coming up with literature to pass out to their fellow students to show them the resources that are out there and just say that they're available to listen to what they have to say. And I'm just really excited to work with them on this during the summer. One of the things that I was asking the mayor about is, I'm not sure the YAC has any money budgeted, but they are willing to match any sort of money that we could come up with them to get the literature that they need, create the website. And they're willing to put in the work. They're going to create the literature and I just hope that we can maybe get a little bit of money, $200, $250. They're willing to do bake sales. So that would be my ask. And then I hope that once they create the literature and we can get a website going and they have results, we can come back to the council with how many kids they've reached, how many clicks have been on the website. And we can present all the hard work and then we could get some more investment to the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. For those that do not know, the Youth Advisory Council is a longstanding council here within the city council. We usually have one of the representatives sitting at the end there to get away for the youth to have a voice in what happens in the city. So I'm grateful for Counselor Sanchez for picking up that baton and meeting with them. And let's move on. So.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Gorley.
Since they're here, could they introduce themselves?
I would love for them to give their presentation. They are a part of the RDI presentation that's coming up, right about right now, actually. Let's move on to the old business, old business, Request for Council Action, the Rural Development Initiative Leadership Program. So this is your guys' turn.
So just a little background, they presented last council meeting and now they're coming back. They have another presentation. Adam's going to be pulling it up here and then they'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Kayla Catino. Address is 407 South First Street, Silverton, Oregon.
And I'm Jennifer Growth, 91017 South Willamette Street, Coburg, Oregon.
So we are here today to request a $20,000 investment from the city of Sweet Home into a multi-generational community leadership program. And this, your, the city has already been innovative in your dollars by supporting leadership development in the past. And this is the next iteration of what's possible. RDI actually already uses Sweet Home as an example in other rural communities to show how a community can support a leadership program. And when this launches, it will be the first multi-community-supported, multi-generational leadership program within the Pacific Northwest. So a little bit about what the impact of your investment will do is this is all about investing in the community. And this program is about building a network of rural leaders. We all know that across the country and Oregon, especially in rural communities, that volunteerism and engagement has decreased over the years. And I know there are lots of projects already happening in Sweet Home, but I'm curious, do these projects have enough volunteers? Are they working effectively and efficiently in groups? Are they partnering and leveraging limited assets and resources within rural? And if we don't invest in these leaders and if they're not supported and trained, organizations will continue to spin their wheels and people will continue to experience burnout. So this program helps people build the skills that they need and that will be invested back into the community. Also, part of this program, these, the skills that they learn are, for example, conflict resolution, leadership models such as catalytic leadership, network leadership. We also will talk a little bit about civic engagement and how to be involved in local government, like what the, what the youth suggested. Action planning. And part of the project too, so they learn these skills, then put it to work within a project. And they will actually interview stakeholders within the community to see what's already happening. So as you consider this program, it's not something separate. It's really something that they are going to interview other community members, see what's already happening and can leverage what projects are already happening within the community and help catapult, catapult them. So it's about building partnerships as well.
Thanks, Kayla. I just want to, if we could advance the slide, thank the council and the city of Sweet Home for the investment they've made to date in this program for the past few years. It's been a pleasure for us to work alongside these young leaders and learn from them. We have obviously been doing this for a long time, over 30 years, in fact, across Oregon in small communities. And it's really rewarding work and it's great to meet all the people that we meet. Just want to explain a little bit about the impact that we typically see in communities when we implement this program and how it's sustained by the community after we are less involved. And so we typically end up with 30 participants or so in these programs. We have seven people signed up so far, some of whom, or eight, oh, sorry, I missed one. Including some of the people that, young people that you're going to hear from in a little bit. One of the things we've noticed, we did some research with the Ford Family Foundation as part of this, you know, multi-year effort to try to figure out, to measure what, what is actually happening in these rural communities when this, this program is implemented. We're seeing what we would describe as a pipeline of leaders. So when you're saying, why aren't people running for office? Why, why don't we have enough people to sit on boards, et cetera, et cetera? Creating this pipeline of leaders is what we're really focused on doing and connecting people to one another. We also have seen from our research that people who participate in this program tend to be significantly more involved in their community because of the skillset that we're trying to help provide. In addition, as part of completing this project, we're seeing significant number of volunteer hours as a result of the community project that happens where they get to practice their skills. In addition, our impact on the local economy is, besides the long-term impacts of all of these increased leaders, we, we definitely work with a lot, a lot of local caterers because when you bring people together in a room, it's important to feed them. So we utilize your local restaurants. We also usually engage with a couple of local trainers. We do sort of a train the trainer thing where people in the community can learn the skills that we're training and train them themselves down, down the pipeline, so to speak. And then we also provide a set of project and program supplies and tools on things, some of the things she mentioned, like conflict resolution, civic engagement, et cetera, that can be used by people going forward in the program. So with that, I think you'd much rather hear from the people in the community that have been involved in this program. So Kayla and I are going to step away and let them give you a short overview of what their experience has been so far.
And then we'll be back for, if you have any questions.
Hi, I'm Beatrice and I've done the leadership group for three years ago. At least it was during quarantine and I'm going to tell you about it. It was a great opportunity, opportunity to be represented in the Sweet Home community because it wasn't all your typical popular kids. The teachers at the junior high nominated us because they saw potential in us. It was a great group to see how actions happen in our town, especially if you join the city youth group after that, after the leadership program. The group project was to freshen up, our group project was to freshen up Ashbrook Park. We put new wood chips down for the path and added a small memorial to a high school teacher who passed away. The process during those groups were slow at first. We still need to figure out who we were grouped with and who we would be in a leadership position. But as soon as we narrowed our ideas down and we took off and we got it done with the budget we were giving. Given. I enjoyed the RDI program because it gave anyone fair play to be in it. It gave every student an opportunity to learn and thrive in a leadership, leadership position. I think it's a great idea to keep it going. The thing that concerns me is, is not, it is not as well-known as it should be. When I came out of the program and into the youth city council, the youth city council went into events and we weren't well-known. We were having people ask us, who are you? Like, what do you guys do? And that kind of stuff. I have very high hopes for this group and I'm hoping we will become more, more well-known.
Thank you, Beatrice.
Hey, I'm Mailey Brewer and I'm going to the high school this upcoming year. I was in the leadership class about three years ago. I started out not knowing the people in my group, but things went so well and I ended up making new friends. I learned about, a lot about who I was and what kind of leader I was. We started out slow, but we ended up making a memorial for a past high school teacher and we helped clean up Ashbrook Park. It was a very good experience and I'm glad that I was a part of it.
Can I ask a question? Which teacher did you give a memorial to?
Ms. Quomper.
Thank you. She was a great teacher. So thank you for working on that. Thank you for sharing with us your experience with this program. So, anything else? Nope. Any questions from council? Thank you for your bravery. Hi, T.
Hi. Hi, I'm Chi Herrera and I started the RDI program about a year and a half ago is when I did it. And when we started off, we basically had like two or three people who actually knew each other. And we were really awkward for the first couple sessions, but our teacher helped us get to know each other and learn different ways to communicate and come together as a team. And by the end of it, we are all really good friends. We all talk to each other and we got to learn how to overcome things with each other. And our project that we ended up doing was we ended up doing a suicide and mental health awareness class. And that was a really big project for us to put together. And we all had to go over our social anxiety with talking to adults and actually make phone calls, which was really hard for us to do. But we ended up doing it with the help of our teacher at the time, as well as some of other people who were in RDI and leadership program that were associated with us. Overall, the program has helped me as well as a couple other people, not a couple other people, quite a few people that have taken it, have all came out with a lot of resources and how to do things, how to set up a team that will actually work and how to go about doing the process and actually getting things done.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Castaneda and it's 2487 Fair Court. Really, just what they're saying, this is a multi-generational program, which I think is so important at this time, especially coming off COVID. Just, we see workers who, you know, new young workers going into the workforce and they don't know how to act. They were at home the first part of theirs. We can take these children and the children can take us, we can walk side by side, do a program and go forward. Done quite a few youth programs in my day and this is really one that I really am excited to go forward with. I think it's going to be an ongoing thing and we're just getting more people who are interested.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
I saw that you had the hope to have 30 and you have eight signed up right now. What, what's the timeline as far as when your expectation of having other participants?
We just opened registration last Thursday, so that's eight participants within five days. We have an outreach plan and as we have been working with the action team here, we have already nominating people for the program. So I would say in the next month or so, we are planning on starting in September.
And which organizations are you reaching out to with your networks to find these, these potential leaders?
It is the, the action teams are, are doing this. Hi, is there anybody in, who are the organizations we're reaching out to? Jen, want to come up? Up the community. Who are you reaching out to?
And we've already reached out to the high school, to the junior high. I'm going to be reaching out to the Boys and Girls Club. And we're looking just through other organizations that have volunteers, sorry, I'm nervous now, that have volunteers to kind of come alongside and help us really mentor each other and go forward.
Okay, thank you.
I will say as a past participant in this program, 2003, in Kusby, that the power of invitation is strong here. So if there are people that you're thinking that might be interested in this program that you think would like to be involved, whether they be adult, you know, leaders or youth, we encourage you to connect with us and we would love to get them that information.
Any questions of counselors? The Request for Council Action is on page 139 in your packet. So I will, if there's no further discussion or questions, I will entertain a motion.
All, in all favor of community development and growth. This is a great training opportunity. With that said, so moved.
All seconded up.
I just would like to clarify, we've got a motion and a second. Is that for option number three?
The 20. I don't, I have, I didn't bring it up in front of them.
Okay. So, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. The full request was for 20, but in the packet it says $12,500. That's why I'm clarifying.
That was based on the presentation that was given at the last, yeah, the last calendar meeting. Council has the discretion to raise it to 20 if you would wish to do so.
Okay, that's where I need the clarification. So.
Well, I was prepared to do the 20 because it's important to our community that we have emerging leaders. And so I will go with that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for the 20 and Counselor Richards, just to clarify, is that like an eye with that or?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Adam, please take a vote.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yeah.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, we have six ayes and no nays. Moving on to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you.
We have an application for naming publicly-owned facilities, Grayville Plaza.
Yes, we, you heard about this about a month ago and our resolution for naming public facilities requires a public hearing on the matter. And so you approved the application at the last, the last time you saw this. Tonight is the public hearing to hear any public feedback on that and then a motion from, from you all would solidify it. This public hearing is not a land use public hearing, so you don't need to do the, the bias questions or any of that. But we do need to give the, the public an opportunity to speak on the matter.
Okay. So, public hearing.
It's a, it is a little bit different with this sort of public hearing. You just need to state that you're opening a public hearing. You can invite staff to make a staff report, followed by asking for any, any testimony in favor, testimony against, or any neutral testimony.
Yes, I just, I didn't see that listed there so last, I always had some confusion.
We don't do this very, this type of public. We don't do this very, this type of public hearing ever, uh, very often, so.
For, okay.
We've done it once maybe that I, in the time I've been here, so.
So we'll open this public hearing at seven PM and I need to ask each counselor if you have any um, conflict of interests, extra, or bias, personal bias. Let's start with Counselor Richards.
Nope.
Oh, we don't have to do this.
It's not a land use matter, so that's not required.
Okay. Oh.
You can if you want.
Certainly.
Would we all have personal bias on this one? Possibly. So anyhow, what else needs to happen next?
All right, so I'll, I'll just give the staff report. So um, there, we have, Joe Graybill was a longtime city employee, worked on a large number of projects for the city. His uh, his hands are all over, all sorts of things from uh, from the sidewalk out to Foster Lake to Sankey Park. Um, and as you all are aware, he retired uh, the end of February, beginning of March. And one of the uh, items that staff felt would be an appropriate way to uh, thank him for his years of service uh, was to pursue naming a public facility after him. Notably, the new plaza area in Sankey Park is something that he designed and uh, does not have a name at this time, so it is not taking away a name from anything that's in existence. Um, and we felt that that would be a token of the city's gratitude for the work that he has done. In reviewing the resolution that governs how public facilities are named, this seemed to fit uh, quite well into that. And so um, we, staff submitted the application for this to happen. You previously saw it. And we've advertised that this public hearing would take place so that anyone could uh, voice their opinion about whether this should or should not be done. That is the staff report.
Thank you for the staff report. So is there anybody here in favor of this? Anybody here want to speak, speak against this option? Counselors, anybody would like to speak to this? Nope. Okay, so I'm going to close this public hearing at seven oh two. The longest public hearing in the, yeah, history of Sweet Home. So um, seven oh two is the close of that public hearing. Let's move on to.
So we would ask for a motion.
Yeah, for the option. Um, there is a, a request on the table. If somebody would like to make a motion, I'd entertain.
I make a motion. So moved is recommended. Adopt resolution number eighteen for twenty twenty-three.
Also.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second and Adam, would you please take a vote?
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes. Resounding yes. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action, the Oregon Jamboree. Is there a staff report on this?
Yes, um, actually, I'm going to go ahead and let Director Larson speak to this. I'm having a little bit of computer error, but we also um, have the Oregon Jamboree here. They'd like to speak as well. He is the Oregon Jamboree. That's what his name is now, right?
That is your name today.
Deferring to me, I'm going to defer to them.
Mayor, Council, Robert Shamick, uh, ten forty First Avenue. And actually, I love coming in front of you guys because, and gals, because I know Jamboree is right around the corner. Thirty-eight days. But who's counting?
So.
And if I look hot and sweaty, I've been setting up, tuning up Tuesday. It's our last one.
And you're missing.
Probably our biggest one. It is, when I left, the parking lot was jam packed, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be fun. Although we are, this is a side note, sorry, uh, we are gonna put in to extend it uh, for one more week.
Okay.
Cause our Cut the Gut, the Oregon Jamboree Cut the Gut Station is in the same spot. So we figured we might as well throw another party.
That's good to me. Wonderful.
Adam, Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
Can we change it to the Thursday nights instead of Tuesday nights so we all can go instead of sitting here in this meeting and missing all the fun?
So the theory behind it was.
For any favors.
Yeah. The real wasn't open on a Tuesday, but now he's open all the time, so. Yeah, we could probably change it.
It's very considerate.
Tune it up Thursdays. There's a T in it.
So I just wanted to add that um, Robert and the Jamboree have brought forward all of their items that this would be approving the permits. Um, there has been some concern about the Weddell Bridge um, being able to hold everybody and the Jamboree has been very um, very accommodating on working with us to make sure that nothing, that it will be within the weight limit that is currently required. Um, as well as with being accommodating with camping and those various pieces within our parks, so.
And hopefully we can do some really good fundraising for the bridge.
That would be awesome.
Mayor, I have a question. Who signed this?
Probably me. Does it look like this?
Yes, that's it. And if it looks like two M's, that's me.
No, we're, we're actually so excited for this year. Um, it's gonna be one of our biggest years ever, which is outstanding. We're pretty much a hundred percent sold out of camping, which is great because I get to write the city a great big check for all of our occupancy tax, which is always fun. Um, you know, so, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a banner year for sure, but we need it, so.
And they're going to sing a song in our, our honor, correct?
Um, I will.
This is a request for council action. So if there's any questions of counselors or more questions of counselors?
Um, I had one more thing to add.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if this is doable or not. So Jamboree every single year for the last thirty-one years, which is, I love to say that thirty-one years strong. Um, there's not too many festivals going to do that. We have already started selling our campsites for twenty twenty-four. Which we do every single year. Um, I think the small issue is, is it's a lot of your property that we're selling that we don't have permission to use yet. Is it possible um, to put in place a general statement saying that you know, there's a contingency out there that we can use the property for twenty twenty-four, possibly twenty twenty-five um, so that we can move forward, um, sell insights and you know, making this jamboree continue for hopefully another thirty-one years. Um, but be able to fall back if something happens. I mean, I I hope Greg says great things about me because I, we work really well together. Um, you know, if something comes up, uh, either him or Dominic call me right away and we, we work through it and um, I hope there's never any big issues. He's looking at me like, eh. Um, but I just think it's, that's kind of a, it's always been a weird gray area. Um, and so I don't know if you guys want to have a discussion about that, but um, I think it's something that we should probably touch on.
Okay, so I'm going to defer to staff, but I just want to clarify, I there, this is an RCA, but I, I think that the sheet is missing from the packet, so people are um, searching for it, just FYI. I think I didn't catch that when I read through the packet earlier. So if the RCA, we'll make it up as we go. Um, but, um, City Manager, would you speak to that? Because I think we have some things happening with DEQ and stuff that we, she would know more about.
So I would say that we do have some plans um, with working with our perks master plan and also working with DEQ on trying to determine uh, exactly where spaces would be allocated and so forth. What I would suggest, if, if this would be something you'd be open to, is working on doing a special event permit for next year now. And then we can kind of work through those things together, could bring that to the council soon, and then we can always amend it if necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Um, and then, so we'd be happy to sort of meet on that and, and discuss some of the potential projects that might be going on, give you guys, I know we've already kind of talked a little bit, but give you some additional ideas. And we are working with DEQ on, for example, um, the property that's currently called Cory Park. Um, on trying to get our wetlands delineation and, and so forth. Um, but once we've done that, then, and that should be happening very soon, then we can have even a better idea of what areas we can allocate for, for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Great.
Waiting for that wetlands delineation is, is important for us, so, yeah. Okay, so we have a request for council action and if somebody would like to make a motion um, regarding the Oregon Jamboree.
Uh, so, so moved is recommended.
Okay.
Second.
Do we know the recommendation?
All of it? So the recommendation would be to approve their application.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve Oregon Jamboree's application. Adam, would you please take a vote?
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Richards. Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, six eyes, no nays, um, to uh, permit this to happen and we uh, hope it's a great time. So now you can get back to tune up Tuesdays and enjoy your evening.
And I don't know what time he's, get out of here, but we're there till like nine thirty, so come on down.
Well, hopefully.
It's gonna be a good show. At the Boondock Boys playing next, so. Thank you.
See you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, ordinance bills, request for council action and the first reading of ordinance bills. This is a public hearing that I am aware of and I'm going to read our public hearing notice. Okay, so I'm going to um, open this public hearing at seven twelve PM. Um, for all those wishing to testify, please beware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that uh, issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have a question, please wait uh, until appropriate time and then direct your question to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. Declarations of city council. I need to ask the counselors if you have personal bias, conflict of interests, or ex parte information. Counselor Richards. Counselor Sanchez. Nope. Counselor Gorley.
No.
Counselor Trask.
No.
Counselor Thorstad.
No.
And I do not either. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is a legislative amendment, uh, meaning a, an amendment to our development code. It consists of text amendments to Title seventeen zoning of the Sweet Home Municipal Code. The proposed text amendments were identified by city staff. City staff identified errors that needed to be corrected for defensibility and clarity of the code. In addition, the amendments include proposed land use regulation of adult oriented businesses. The following is a timeline of meetings associated with this project. On April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, staff submitted the online Papa, which is the notification to the state. On April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, a notice was published in the New Era. On June first, twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this uh, on these proposed text amendments and the Planning Commission moved to recommend approval of the, of these amendments to the city council. At the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three council meeting tonight, um, we are holding this public hearing regarding this legislative amendment and uh, after which we can conduct a first reading. Um, and uh, two more readings of the ordinance are necessary in order to adopt the ordinance. Most of the, the vast majority of the amendments identified here are correcting errors that we found after we passed our new development code. Um, many of them are relatively minor. One that was more major was that we accidentally removed um, the permitted residential uses for the downtown commercial and the highway commercial zones. Those previously allowed multifamily and that got omitted in the new code, which was not intended by the Planning Commission. And so this puts it back in, um, which I might add, adds a lot of flexibility for our, our city when it comes to housing. Um, and, and then the, the only other, the major amendment is the, the uh, regulation of adult oriented businesses. This makes such a use, a conditional use and limits it to the industrial zone. Um, as long as specified distances from schools and parks and um, churches. So that is my report.
Good. Thank you. Testimony, um, testimony in favor? Testimony in opposition? Neutral testimony? Okay, gonna close this public hearing at seven fifteen. Oops, sorry. Discussion amongst council. Any questions of council? Okay, I'm open. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I move to approve the application LA two three dash O two and conduct a first reading of the ordinance bill number fourteen for two thousand and twenty-three.
I will second that.
I have a motion in a second. Adam, please take a vote.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, six eyes and no nays to approve this application and to conduct the first reading. Okay.
Stop. It's not stop. This is why AI is bad.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Adam. Since we had a unanimous passage of that for the first reading, I will entertain a motion by title only for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to read this ordinance by total title only. Adam, please take a vote.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. Mayor Coleman.
Yes, we have six ayes and no nays to read this ordinance for the second reading by title only.
Ordinance Bill number fourteen for 2023, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance, amending various portions of Sweet Home Municipal Code Title Seventeen.
Thank you. Yes, with a correction. Yeah, the last page it said twenty twenty-two. Okay. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, reports of committees. Do we have any committee reports that would like to be presented?
It's got my number. So currently, we're still waiting for the med students to come back and have some ideas of how they'll address the information they provided us with the survey. And the health fair is still underway, getting ready for August nineteenth. And we're still looking for more vendors to join us. It should be exciting and a great one this year. The other thing is our next meeting will be addressing emergency response in ways that we can help communicate better with our community and reach out to our vulnerable populations in crises. And so we'll be bouncing that ball around and having some good conversation about that. And I believe that that is all for that one. The Ad Hoc Committee on Arts and Culture is currently our main focus is on the painting project with the city businesses and supporting the meeting on Thursday for the community to be able to come in and get all the information possible that's provided by the city. And the city manager will be speaking more about that, but hopefully I'll have more to report next time. Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez, maybe the YAC would like to have a booth at the health fair. Just an idea.
I think if I could take one more moment to talk about them because I forgot a couple of things.
Of course.
They did want to talk and get help for more booths at the safety fair, health fair, Harvest Festival. I'm not sure if this is appropriate time, but I would like to see something on the agenda if it were possible. They were saying that they weren't noticed or recognized and they have been appointed by the council. And so if we could have something about who they are or their picture, if it was parental approved on our website. They are also wanting to make a website, so I don't know if we can post a link to their link on our website. And then if maybe we can research if there's any grant funding for that committee, because I don't think there's any other way to get money to help them realize their goals. I really want them to be successful.
Just in support of that. Okay, just in support of that, there are several PowerPoints and videos of past YAC things that they've done that could be on their website if you'd like to have them.
I don't mean to be picky, and I normally just talk privately. I just looked at it myself, but it hasn't been updated since twenty nineteen, the YAC. So I would like to get current. And then maybe if it could be on the agenda, we can talk more about what we can do to support that committee.
Okay, so in order for something to be placed on the agenda, it would need to take a motion from a counselor and a second from another counselor, and we can entertain that for the good of the order. Would you be willing to present that at that moment? I'm still here.
Yes, I don't think it will be much longer.
Any other committee reports that people would like to share? Okay, moving on, city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counselors. All right, I'm having issues too. So before I get into my city manager's report, and I just have a couple of things, I would also like to request to cancel the next meeting, which would be that first July meeting in order for staff and council to focus on all the projects that are going on as well as sportsman's holiday and take a little break. So I wanted to bring that forward, but that would need to be approved by motion.
Yeah, there's a consensus of council in order to cancel a city council meeting. So I need a consensus, so please let me know what your thoughts are.
I'm all good with that.
Yeah, take a council day.
And so I'm okay with that.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
Good with that, too. Counselor Thor said, okay, we're good to cancel the next meeting. And we hope you all enjoy a sportsman's holiday.
Thank you. And next piece is I'm actually going to be out of town for a little while during that period as well. So I would also like to request the council to appoint a city manager pro temp. I'd like to recommend Blair Larson for that role from July sixth through July thirteenth, and also want to request that that be approved by motion.
I will entertain a motion for this.
So moved, I guess. Is that all I have to say?
Yeah, there we go.
I have a motion to appoint Blair Larson as the pro temp city manager during those dates.
Is Blair okay with that? Okay, second.
I have a motion and a second, please, Adam, take a vote.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, we have six ayes and no nays to appoint Director Larson as the pro temp city manager.
Great, thank you. And then that following day on the fourteenth would actually be our Paint the Town kickoff. So we are still looking for volunteers and we're working very closely with the Art and Culture Committee. We do have right now sponsorship from Miller Paint. We have some other companies that we're also talking with on potentially providing supplies and things like that. On June twenty ninth, the Art and Culture Committee, as Counselor Gorley was mentioned, has graciously offered to host a open house presentation here at City Hall at six PM. And we're hoping that anybody who's interested in this initiative can come, whether they are a property owner, business owner, volunteer, potential volunteer, just want to know more about it, we'd love to have them there. Oh, thanks, Adam. And that I will be giving a quick presentation. We'll have the Arts and Culture there giving some conversations. We're hoping to have paint palette available at that meeting. It's pretty short notice, though. It's about two days, so I know that they're working on it and we'll see how far they get before we're there. And I'll hear from some people, you know, oh, I can't paint or I have, you know, a little bit of mobility issues. We need volunteers in all areas. So even if you can't paint, if you want to help with organizing or help with children or spreadsheets or refreshments, there's tons and tons of opportunity. It would start on July fourteenth, and then it would happen each consecutive week. We're hoping to have a few buildings looking pretty good before Jamboree. We'd love to be able to show off our town. So very excited about that. And another piece that's exciting is I had a very promising conversation with Fitzpatrick Painting, who would like to partner with us in some way. So we're still working out the details, but I just want to thank them for being interested in this and I hope to have some more news about the specifics soon. But and those you who may not be aware, they're a large painting company and they are, they definitely want to partner with us in some way. So we'll get to see what that looks like. Also, so last week I went up and met with Representative Jamie Kate, and she included us in our newsletter and had some nice things to say about Sweet Home. I also visited the offices of Merkley and Wyden. We're still waiting to hear back on those particular funding requests. It doesn't look like any funding requests are happening with the legislature right now, but there are some still possibilities for federal. But we are also not giving up, you know, we'll wait to see what's happening with the federal funding, but we're looking at some additional grants as well. We have some good news about the wastewater treatment plant that Director Springman will be talking about in his report. And then just a couple of things, we're all excited about Cut the Gut and Sportsman Holiday. The Chamber is doing a great job with some of that. City Hall will be a Cut the Guts checkpoint again this year, so that should be really exciting. Just a reminder that the Icebox Cookoff is this weekend and the city is a sponsor and they've been advertising the city as a sponsor. So we're excited to see that and getting to be there. I also wanted to say we do still have camping at Corey Park. We haven't done our grand opening yet, but we hope to organize that soon. But I want to give a special thank you to Counselor Trask for our very first kayak that can go to and be utilized once we have that set up in Corey Park. So thank you very much. Also, just thank you all. There's a lot going on and this was not as long of an agenda as I was afraid it might be, but you all had to sit through the reading of the ordinance and everything and just thank you for your support. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Vissarport, I've been asked for by a few people actually regarding why people that live outside city limits cannot vote on city issues or why they can't run for office. So I actually reached out to the state, to LOC and to the county clerk's office because they manage our elections. And so I just wanted to read what they have to say here and just hopefully that'll answer some questions, but feel free, anybody who has more questions, let me know. Section fourteen A of the Oregon Constitution says forth the time of holding elections incorporated cities and towns pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute two-two-one dot nine zero-two states elective offices within city will be elected by the electors of a city. The jurisdiction of the city lies within the boundaries of city limits. Residents that live within the city are taxed on their property by the city, whereas people living outside the city limits are not taxed on their property by the city. Therefore, measures that are referred to the ballot by the city only apply to the jurisdictional area of the city. Jurisdictional residency is a leading factor in eligibility to vote in a particular jurisdiction, whether it be state, county, or city elections. ORS two-four-seven dot zero-three-five provides information about voter registration and determination of determination of residency. And our city charter also states that you need to be a resident of the city to vote in city elections. So that's the information I have. If anybody has any further questions, please feel free to reach out. I'm hoping all of you can enjoy the barbecue this weekend as we are sponsors, but also Princess Coronation, the parade, logging Olympics, all that happens with the sportsman's holiday, and of course, Cut the Gut. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, department directors' reports. Are we going to hear from Director Springman?
Thank you. Just want to give you a brief update on the wastewater project. We did promise that by June thirtieth, we would be done with this project and design and also working towards the finish of the improvement project. So just four things I want to update on. We received a email today from DEQ. They completed their ninety percent review. Those comments will be incorporated into the final design set and already being done right now. They are working on a draft letter approval letter for the project, so that's good news. We will have to give back a hundred, you know, when, once we fix the ninety percent, but they're already stating that at a hundred percent, it'll be a quick turnaround. They don't anticipate any time, so that's good news for us. Second of all, because of that turnaround from DEQ, West Yoast by this Friday is planning to submit the set to us fully complete, the same set that would go back to DEQ for a hundred percent. So we're ecstatic, we hit that mark. It's been a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work on the engineering team and staff, and it's a good day today. The other thing that got completed is we submit our preliminary engineering report to USDA and DEQ as a part of that packet. That's what's going to set us for permitting to put more wastewater into the into the San Yam River and get approval to expand the plant and open up everything once we get going. So it's been a long time coming to get that going. We're anticipating up to about a hundred and twenty days for their review. Hopefully get it back a little bit quicker. But we hit that mark today. And finally, last, as of last week, June twenty first, we are second submittal to Biz Oregon. We have submitted six point one million dollars for reimbursement as of last week, and they're going through the second. The one, the four point six million has already been approved. I think we've already had that funding. We will hit that mark with, we have a few more invoices that are outstanding and our partners are getting those in as soon as possible. So we did hit that mark. We do have a little bit more work to do on the backside, but that is planned for in the project and we have funding to do so. So I just want to let you know that we, we got there.
That's great. Thank you so much for sharing that. Any other directors would like to share their reports? Hopefully you all take a moment to read those. So moving on, Finance Director, do you want to share anything? Nope, okay, all right. You don't have to. You can say no thank you like they just did over there.
We did hear back from our consulting firm, Marina and Company, that we finished our bank reconciliations through the end of June of last year. And so we are getting closer and closer to being up to date and our audit is getting underway, so I'm starting to work with the auditors on work papers and getting that done for the fiscal year twenty-two. So we're on our way to getting back on track.
That is good news. Thank you for sharing that. So, all right, moving on, City Attorney, any report? Okay, Council, Business for the Good of the Order.
They asked me about on Thirteenth Avenue on Main Street, there are no, there's no lines across there in that crosswalk. So that somebody needs to take care of that. It's whether it's O'Donnell or somebody, there's no lines on Thirteenth Avenue, and I don't, I'm not sure about twelfth.
Are you talking about on Main Street itself where crosses Thirteenth Avenue?
Yes, across.
Or on Thirteenth?
Thirteenth Avenue that goes all the way across.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may? Okay, so I would like to make a motion to have staff research funding for the YAC and updating our website for them, possibly putting pictures up. Is that the right motion?
Second that.
That is the right one. That will need a vote of council, as that's not adding to the agenda. It's assigning work to staff, so let's take a vote, Adam, please.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, six ayes and no nays to ask staff to take care of those things for YAC. Thank you. Any other counsel for the business for the good of the order? No? Okay, I'll adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-nine PM.
There you go, Counselor Sanchez.